August in the city's first grand hotel, the 1869 historic Pico House. While LA Mayor Eric Garcetti gets on board a plan to eradicate all traffic fatalities over the next decade, the city attorney targets a rise in identity theft cases and pedestrians will soon have more street crossing options at a busy intersection. All these stories in City Beat. Sitting at a desk in the middle of Boyle Heights Street, Mayor Eric Garcetti signed an executive directive aimed at cutting traffic fatalities in the city to zero by 2025. The directive calls for reaching the goal dubbed Vision Zero by creating safer streets, enforcing traffic laws, and conducting more public education. The action sets up a committee consisting of mayoral, police, fire, public works, and county public health staff that will target areas most in need of safety upgrades. City officials say more than 200 people a year die in traffic collisions, with about 44% of all deaths and severe injuries involve pedestrians and bicyclists. Each year, there are about 30,000 collisions in Los Angeles.
If we can achieve the vision of Vision Zero, children will be safer walking to school, families will be safer going to the park, commuters will be safer going to work.
The heavily traveled intersection of Hollywood and Highland will soon be getting a makeover to improve safety for the thousands of pedestrians who cross there each day. The effort spearheaded by City Councilman Mitchell Farrell will see the intersection be redesigned to give it a scramble crosswalk, which will allow pedestrians to cross from all corners in every direction, including diagonally and simultaneously. Pedestrians at the intersection currently cross in a traditional fashion, waiting for a green light and walk signal in each direction with no diagonal crossing. The $50,000 project is expected to be completed by the end of the year. City Attorney Mike Fuer is stepping up efforts to tackle the growing problem of identity theft. Fuer said he is assigning two full-time attorneys and adding other resources to deal with identity theft cases. The city attorney's office so far this year has filed 375 identity theft cases. Last year, the office filed a total of 254 cases.
They're going through your trash, which identity thieves do, whether they're going through your mailbox, or whether they're trying to find other means of getting your background. They're trying to build a profile of who you are, and in the course of building that profile, they want to take advantage of key bits of information that they're getting. Don't give it to them.
The public can avoid becoming the victims of identity theft by shredding personal and financial documents, not giving out sensitive information, not using debit cards, locking mailboxes, and not storing driver's licenses or registrations inside their car. An installation of a new control system is helping pave the way for a brighter future at LA Sanitation. Rasha Goel has more.
This control room is the latest technological advancement at the LA Sanitation's hyperion water reclamation plant, one that is being commended for its efficiency.
From this very room behind me, we will monitor water in our system, in all of our water reclamation plants, as far away as Van Nuys in the San Fernando Valley.
This innovative project, as Commissioner Repening mentioned, brings over $100 million of just efficiencies to the city of Los Angeles.
The 15-year project will ultimately monitor and control thousands of assets at LA Sanitation facilities citywide, all at one location.
We have 6,700 miles of pipes, we have 67 pumping stations, we have four water reclamation plants, we serve 4 million people in the city of LA, and all of that is going to be controlled from right here.
The new control room centralizes system monitoring, which increases reliability, safety, efficiency, and sustainability of all water reclamation operations. Varuj Apkian, who has been key in implementing the system, says this is going to help in resolving some of the past issues, including managing contracts, vendors, and...
We had issues on managing various contracts for various vendors, various systems, with a beginning and a different ends. We had issues with training all of our operation maintenance engineering staff on various systems to maintain them as well as operate them. As people moved from location to location, we had to retrain them.
Officials say the new system will also help in handling emergency response. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Now, this new system will position Los Angeles Sanitation as a leader in the field of wastewater treatment and water reclamation. Well, one way to beat the heat is to take a dip in Hollywood's newly renovated public pool. As Gil Reyes reports, one councilman made a big splash at the pool's reopening.
Wearing a dress shirt, slacks, and shoes, Hollywood-area Councilman Mitchell Farrell gets ready to take the plunge.
This is a beloved pool in a beloved park that's going to see lots of use, so it's a very exciting day here in Hollywood, in the 13th district.
The Hollywood Pool reopened this summer after a $7 million renovation. Improvements include shaded bleachers, a new lifeguard station, there's also what seems to be everyone's favorite.
The slide, the water slide.
The slide.
It has to be the slide.
Yes, a big, swirly, water-gushing, aqua-blue slide, the main attraction at this pool which originally opened in the 1950s.
It's also more sustainable, it has water conservation built into the design, it's also more efficient with the way it dispenses chemicals, it can be done remote by, from a smartphone.
Better jump in before the pool closes for the fall season. At the Hollywood Recreation Center, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The Hollywood Pool will be open every day until September 7th. Well, it's a yearly tradition in South LA as folks from the community gather to enjoy some smooth jazz up close. The soulful sounds of the upright bass entertains the crowd, along with other musical instruments, as jazz musicians take to the stage in South LA during the 20th Annual Central Avenue Jazz Festival. One jazz lover has been attending the event for 15 years and says that even though many of his favorite jazz artists are now gone, the new ones are just as talented.
There's still good jazz artists around and young jazz artists around to still keep the event vibrant and, you know, very enjoyable.
For more than two decades, the Central Avenue Jazz Festival has helped celebrate the musical history and culture of South Los Angeles, the West Coast birthplace of jazz music.
This is an exciting time of year, which brings family, friends together to share in the wonderful experience of jazz, the music that really defined this part of Central Avenue for so many years.
This free, family-friendly event along the historical Central Avenue between King Boulevard and Vernon Avenue included three stages of live musical performances, art and business development, and employment resources, health, wellness, youth pavilions, and of course, plenty of barbecue. Price says the festival highlights all the changes taking place in the neighborhood, such as facade work and mural restorations on buildings and other street improvements. The LADWP is also planning to move some of the utility lines underground, creating a more visually appealing street. Not only appealing to the eyes, but the ears as well. Our Los Angeles Dodgers opened their first Children's Dream Field for kids with disabilities. Gil Reyes shows us the specially-designed stadium in Baldwin Hills.
Children with special needs finally getting their chance at bat.
So that's really special because it'll give every kid an opportunity to know what it's like to be on that ball diamond, to maybe catch a ball or run around the bases.
City Council President Herb Wesson, local kids, and the Dodgers here in Baldwin Hills for the opening of the team's 38th Children's Dream Field. These mini stadiums are oftentimes built for kids in underserved LA neighborhoods, but this is the first specifically designed for kids with disabilities. Its synthetic turf allows easy access for wheelchairs and walkers. The city, the LA 84 Foundation, and the Dodgers, they all teamed up to build the $650,000 stadium. National League MVP and Cy Young winner Clayton Kershaw and his wife Ellen also donated to the cause.
The Dodgers, they're not just a first-place team, they're also made up of great individuals, great human beings who care about their community.
The cause hits home for Dodgers outfielder Jock Peterson. Peterson's brother Champ seated next to him has Down Syndrome. First baseman Adrian Gonzalez and his family also here on opening day to lend support.
So I'm proud to be here with them, and we got them these brand-new solar lights. Compliments to the city of LA.
There's also a Dodgers scoreboard featuring faces of the special athletes who will use the park, all-stars in their own right. In Baldwin Hills, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Though it's the first Dodgers Dream Field for kids with special needs, the city has another universally accessible ballpark in the community of Lake Balboa. Well, Mayor Eric Garcetti's goal of cutting traffic fatalities to zero by 2025 received plenty of praise on social media. That's the focus of this week in tweets. Vision Zero Network tweeted, "Way to go at Vision Zero LA, you are leading the way not only in your city, but across the nation." Tim Papendro posted a pic of the mayor alongside council members Mike Bonin and Mitchell Englander, posting, "Well done, LA, 11th city to join the movement to end traffic fatalities." Jeanette Sade Khan retweeted the mayor's post, writing, "#VisionZeroTakesFightInTheCityOfAngels", as Eric Garcetti vows to nix traffic deaths. Bravo. And Wolfpack Hustle posted, "Thank you, Bonin, Englander, and Hweezar for leading our city council towards safe streets for all." Bridget Smith wrote, "Handle Eric Garcetti says LA is no longer the world's car capital, now the capital of transportation renaissance. And that's a look at this week in tweets. Well, a local festival celebrates cultural diversity with the help of Council Districts 1, 14, and the Department of Cultural Affairs. Rasha Goel has more.
This is the 10th anniversary of Lumist Day. Lumist Day is a celebration of our city's diversity, our cultural diversity, and just all the ethnicities that come together.
This year, for the first time, the event was held for three days at five locations, this particular one in Boyle Heights. Known as the festival of northeast Los Angeles, Lumist Day is a free event that has become a signature community arts and music event in the neighborhoods of northeast Los Angeles.
We have bands, we have vocalists, we have poets, and we have dancers.
Among the artists performing was Jessica Fichot, whose French and Chinese and American upbringing has influenced her music, affusing styles and languages.
Rose, rose, I love you. Rose, rose, I love you. With an eager heart.
Oh, I enjoy music, I enjoy dancing, and I enjoy seeing community events, and it's very fun.
And of course, there was a little taste of culture for attendees. Lumist Day may have been celebrated at five locations, but for this community, it's one big party. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Lumist Day is named in honor of Charles Lummis, who founded the city's first museum and whose name became known for promoting cultural diversity. Well, a dance group seeks to inspire young kids through hip-hop, discovering the heart of LA, and getting creative with recycling. All this in this week's Things to Do. Justice by uniting in Creative Energy, or Juice, is a nonprofit weekly hip-hop arts program that seeks to develop youth leadership and technical skills, creative expression, and self-confidence through hip-hop, which includes breakdancing, urban art, DJing, and music recording. Juice is a nonprofit hip-hop collective that teaches visual arts workshops, painting large-scale murals in the community, and recording and producing music. Free for all ages, Juice encourages the creative expression and self-empowerment of at-risk youth through skill-building using the music, visual art, and dance of the hip-hop culture. By providing youth with high-quality equipment, artistic mentors, and a safe, accessible space to gather, Juice participants are able to learn from each other and hone their artistic skills in an environment free from discrimination and violence. The jam sessions take place every Saturday at the MacArthur Park Recreation Center located at 2230 West Sixth Street. For more information, visit RampartJuice.com. Now in its 35th year, the LA Conservancy's Walking Tour Program can help you discover or rediscover the hidden gems and fascinating history in the heart of our city. Join in and explore the history and architecture of downtown LA. Since 1980, the Los Angeles Conservancy has introduced countless Angelinos to the rich history and culture that downtown's architecture has to offer. Discover the heart of this great city as skilled volunteer docents talk about fascinating stories of downtown's transformation. Visit public plazas hidden in plain sight and see how the old and the new blend into a unique urban landscape. The tour takes place on Saturday, September 5th at 2:00 PM. Meeting location is at Pershing Square. For more information, visit LAconservancy.org. Kids get a chance to creatively reuse a collection of recycled materials to make fantastic art projects to take home. Rediscover Center is an arts and environmental nonprofit organization. It's a creative center which promotes resource conservation, creativity, and community engagement through material reuse. Open Studio is open every Saturday and Sunday. The last project starts at 4:00 PM to allow enough time for completion. With membership, receive two children free once per month. Rediscover Center is located at 12958 West Washington Boulevard. For more, visit rediscovercenter.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Cash in your water-thirsty lawn for a water-wise landscape. LADWP will give you $3.75 for every square foot of grass you replace with California-friendly landscaping. Goodbye, grass, hello, hardy shrubs, plants, and trees fit for LA's dry climate. Add a walkway made of decomposed granite. Cashing in your lawn equals money in your pocket and long-term savings on your water bill. Learn more at ladwp.com/waterconservation. Keep conserving today. It's Water Conservation the LA Way.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place.
Don't fight a brick, the brick will win.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a Nyangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste.
Sargent, please call the members. Have the member... Sargent, I need a few more members so that we... Good morning, good morning. Today is Wednesday, September 2nd. I want to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And all are welcome. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonneville, Sadio, Englander, Francis, Harrison, Weezer, Correia, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Westen, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Sadio moves, O'Farrell seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves, Rue seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue items 1J and 1M to October 6th and item 2 to October 7th.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 9 are items noticed for public hearing, sir.
Okay, which items do we have cards on?
1 and 2.
Okay, let's hold those items and let us prepare to vote on the other items. Okay, so let's again, let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 a.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week to September 9th for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12.
Okay, thank you. Now, we do have, so we already have, Mr. Correia. So we need one more. Mr. Englander?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, actually, right, today? So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On 1M, if we can continue that for 30 days, per council member Harrison, please.
Okay, what, what date is that?
30 days.
Mr. Clerk?
Is that M or N, sir?
I believe it was M. As in Mary, yes.
Thank you, sir, that's been continued.
Thank you very much.
Let's continue.
Very good, sir. Items 10 through 28 are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 10, 11 and 16 have been submitted. Item 24 should be held on the desk until such time as the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee report has been submitted.
Okay, let's hold item 24. Mr. Sadio?
Please hold item 28, 30 days.
You want to continue 28?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, if we were to continue item 28 for 30 days, again, what date?
That brings us to October 6th, sir.
So without objection, that'll be the order? Let us now, Mr. Weezer?
If I could call 20 and 15 special, please?
20 and 15 special for Mr. Weezer.
Thank you.
Mr. Englander?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to call item 11 special. Hold that on the desk.
11?
27 will be circulating and amending motion for as well.
11 and 27? Okay, now let's prepare to vote, Mr. Clerk, on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and let's tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where?
Items 29 through 44 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? Mr. Biden?
Oh, those are public hearings not held.
Welcome. So where are we, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, that brings us to the items with cards. That would be item 35, 36, 39, 41, 42, 43 and 44.
Okay, let's hold those and prepare to vote on the remaining items? Or, Mr. Englander? Okay, why don't we vote on the remaining items? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Englander?
Item 14 forthwith, please.
14 forthwith per, for Mr. Englander. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, items 45 through 47 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I will defer to Mr. Correia on these issues.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 45 and 46 are settlements. The Budget and Finance Committee recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations and those can be done in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item 47 is a matter that needs to be heard in closed session.
Okay, so let's, we'll hold 47, Mr. Clerk. And why don't you make the necessary announcement where it relates to 45 and 46?
Very good, sir. For item 45, in the case entitled Richard Holt versus City of Los Angeles at All, there is a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement. And for item 46, in the case entitled John Gearco and Bashiri versus City of Los Angeles at All, there is a recommendation to expend $5 million in settlement.
Okay, thank you. So let's vote on those two items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, I believe there's a request to send those items forthwith.
Okay, then without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. That brings council to presentations or items called special?
Okay, there are no presentations today. Do we have? Okay, let's vote on reconsideration of the ordinances. If you could identify them and then we'll vote on reconsideration.
Yes, sir, those would be items 3 through 8.
Okay, this vote, first vote is on reconsideration. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Now we'll actually vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to items called special.
President? Mr. President? We're ready for item 11 when you're ready. We've got a special commission appointment.
Okay, we will get to that. I think that it would be an appropriate time, though, for, where's Betsy? Or Sherry? Okay, if I could get, let's have a two-minute recess. If I could have all members come to the center. We're going to take our photograph for this year. So if everybody would come to the center table.
The President's attention.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Mr. President, can we reconsider 18 and continue it for one week, please?
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration or do we need to? Okay, let's, 18, Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
42 ayes.
So now, Mr. Spindler, please. So now we'll actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll.
Continue it for one week.
Oh, no, you wanted to continue it.
Continue it for one week, yes.
So that would bring us where?
September 9th, sir.
Okay, all right. Now, on item 28? We need to vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Sadio, it's my understanding you wanted to adjust the date?
Yes, we want to continue it to the 22nd.
Mr. Clerk? Do you hear?
Yes, sir, that would be September 22nd.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm going to go quickly to item 44. Mr. Herman, item 44. Mr. Englander, I'll be getting to you after one more item. Mr. Herman, if you're here. Item 44.
President, sir, just 30 seconds. I just want to remind you that the final outcome of the maps of various council districts are racially motivated and discriminatory because you take the property of the taxpayers and you technically give it away for pretty much nothing. It's kind of like the current news today about the corruption out in San Bernardino where that city hall there was stealing from the proper...
You're not on the subject. Stay on this subject.
Okay, well, I held it down to 30 seconds.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Englander, we're going to move item 11.
Great, thank you very much, colleagues. If I can please ask our commissioner to have a seat. Mr. Johnson, or soon to be newly appointed, I hope. I think, perhaps? We've got the votes. Colleagues, I had the honor and privilege to not only sit down with Mr. Johnson and talk about all the issues with the Los Angeles Police Department and his experience with the city, but it was a privilege. And learning a lot of his ideas, hearing about where we think the police department needs to go, him understanding full well, not only as an airport commissioner and having served this city and the residents through his volunteerism, but his entire family who is actively engaged in here as well. And by the way, I want to point that out. His wife who is here serves on, with the zoo and works here as well. And his son, who is also here and growing tall, a very tall, tall son. Good-looking boy. And great-looking family. But more importantly, or just as important, I think your family is much more important than anything, the ideas that you have and the experience you bring in everything we're doing right now and the changes, not only with what's happening in the police department and police departments across the country, but the technological changes, a lot of the issues that we're dealing with each and every day and those challenges. We spent a great deal of time in committee and really went through a lot of the issues and detailed, and I want to thank my colleagues because it was a vibrant discussion, a good Q and A, and the ability to sit down with you even prior to that, I was impressed, very impressed. And this is one of the most important commissions, not only that we have, but it's the most important function we've got in city government is public safety. Our police department and our fire department, and they work hand in hand. And so I want to welcome you and give you an opportunity to give you an opening statement as well and share some of your background, your experiences, your thoughts and moving forward to this incredibly important commission appointment. Thank you. You're welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to see you all today, and I thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate the mayor's confidence in me and thankful for the opportunity to serve the city in this very important role. You've all seen my biography, so you know the work I've done with the Boys and Girls Club, the Urban League, and many other nonprofit organizations. My commitment to social justice has been longstanding and has been unwavering. As you know, I've served on the Board of Airport Commissioners for the past two years. I'm proud of what we were able to accomplish while I was there, but I can think of no more important commission than the police commission, particularly at this moment in time. As you know, cities across our country are facing a serious crisis relating to policing of minority communities, and L.A. is not immune to this. In these moments, we need to take extra care to ensure that the bonds of trust between the police and the community are restored and strengthened. Safe and prosperous communities rely on the work of an effective police department. Police work is incredibly difficult and often dangerous, and the vast majority of LAPD officers perform their job in a lawful manner with respect for the communities they serve. Our job is not just to make sure that crime is reduced. Our responsibility is to make sure that our officers have the best training, use the best tactics, and have the best equipment to keep our communities safe while minimizing use of force and respecting rights. I look forward to playing my part on this commission. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer all your questions.
Mr. Englander, back to you.
I don't know if we have any questions on the queue, but I will tell you that I've had the opportunity and the privilege to sit down with a lot of commissioners and commission appointments, as we all have. And it's rare that you walk away with an awe of impression and that you find somebody with not only the passion and the character and the ability and the skill and the knowledge, but the drive to make a difference. And knowing full well, this is going to be a full-time unpaid volunteer job. You'll be constantly, not only on the clock, but when you're off the clock, constantly looking at and reading up on every issue, not just here locally, but nationally and internationally. Everything will catch your attention so different than it ever did from a different perspective. And I know you have that, the character and ability to tune in on those issues and look at those from so many different perspectives. And I welcome and honor you to this commission, and I ask all of you to support our new commissioner and with your eye vote. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to stand and say how much I appreciate the mayor's selection and your willingness to serve, Mr. Johnson, you and your family, because it's a family affair. Your time is, for all kinds of reasons, won't be your own. And so we appreciate your background, your training, your experience, and your sensitivity. We think it's gonna make a big difference on the commission. We know that the police are here to protect and serve and respect. And so we just want to make sure that all of those elements are in play as we really try to fashion a community-based policing regime that really serves the interests of everyone. So we applaud your willingness to serve and the skills that you bring, and we're excited to welcome you to another branch of the city family. Congratulations.
And if I could ask you to do all of us one big favor. Introduce us to this good-looking family that you have here.
So I have four children. My oldest daughter is in college, so she was not able to be here today. My son Nicholas is a senior in high school. This is my beautiful wife Yasmin, who's the zoo commissioner. And we thought about bringing my five-and-two-year-old, but didn't want to have to have them removed by the sergeant-at-arms.
All right, then.
And my cousin Wapie is here as well.
Wonderful. Let's... Members, prepare to vote on this. Let's... Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Before we move on to the next item, I want to thank all of the members for today's salute to our dear friend and colleague, Mike Bonin, who is in the business of being a father, and we felt wearing baby blue, boy blue would be appropriate. And we wish you and Sean all of the best. And this will probably never, ever happen again, but just know that. So... Yeah, between Mr. Fuentes and Mr. Kocorian, it was a slight challenge, but they came in and played with the rest of the team. So anyway, congratulations, Mike, and we wish you all of the best, you and Sean. Let's move to item thirty-five, where we have cards from Mr. Walsh and Mr. Spindler on item thirty-five.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is for the Central Avenue Historic Business Improvement District. I hope your improvement district down there will be like the Hollywood Improvement District. Because when we had a crack house in our building in our neighborhood at Yucca and Argyle, the cops didn't do a damn thing about it. Were they getting paid off? I don't know. But when I went to the Hollywood Business Improvement District, and they're all off-duty or retired cops, they put pressure on the LAPD, and they were forced to clean out the crack house. So I'm telling you, when you get these... And they'll be in uniform. Go to them, you'll get much more satisfaction out of them than out of the corrupt racist police.
Thank you. So was it... I think it was Mr. Spindler. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good, they cleared the Nazis from the room. Let's go.
No, let's stay out... You're not on the subject.
No, gotta wear your hood. Now, these BIDs are BS. Bids are just another way of tax. You don't need bids. In the L.A. Times today, top story, Korean businesses threatening to leave Los Angeles because of the high cost of taxation in this city. Currently, people from Texas are coming here. There are no bids in the entire state of Texas, which is called the Republic of Texas, because they're gonna have to secede from the friggin' union one day, so they're gonna keep their name. So no on the bid. Bid is a rip-off, just like everything else the city touches. No on the bid, sweep up your own sidewalks.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let us... Mr. Price?
If I may, Mr. President, just a few words. I just want to stand and celebrate the efforts of creating this Business Improvement District on Central Avenue. It's been a collaborative effort with businesses, property owners, nonprofits in the area, and has really culminated in property owners, business owners taking more responsibility for creating the kind of environment that we want to see here. In addition to the private sector investment, there's been significant public sector investment along this corridor. The mayor has designated it as the Great Streets. We're doing some facade improvement. We're going to be undergrounding the utilities. And so creating a Business Improvement District is, I think, an appropriate way to complement these other activities. And so I just want to thank the CABA, Central Avenue Business Association, a number of other nonprofits, CRCD, A Place Called Home, and others who have worked really hard and diligently with the clerk's office. I want to just acknowledge the hard work from the clerk in assisting us in this effort. But I want to just assure everyone that, you know, Central Avenue is open for business, but now business as usual. And so we're happy to celebrate the creation of this Business Improvement District. Members, and I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. There are no more cards on this item. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Item passes. Fourth with for Mr. Price. Let's move on to item fifteen, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, Madam President.
Fifteen for Mr. Weezer.
Are there public comment cards or...?
There are none.
Okay. I'll just speak on this item, then if that's okay with you, Madam President. Thank you. And colleagues, today's an exciting day for our friends in the bee community, that we will now in the City of Los Angeles allow backyard beekeeping as an accessory use in single-family zones. This is quite important, not only for the City of Los Angeles, that will continue to support our local ecology, but also statewide has economic impacts. Today, it is well documented that the population of bees has dropped perhaps forty percent, and this shortage of bees has forced California almond growers, just one set of growers and a particular fruit, to rent out hives for pollination at high prices and from as far away as New Zealand. I appreciate the work of staff on this item. They have been very transparent with the public and diligent in their research. I know they consulted with bee specialists and cities around the country to come up with a thoughtful proposal in front of us. And this proposal offers simple expectations of best management practices for urban beekeeping, which can help minimize conflict with neighbors. We want to enable this increasingly popular activity, even while we preserve the rights of the city to address any complaints about poorly maintained hives. This has been a year in the making, and so I want to thank the staff for really putting in the time and effort to make this possible. It's not only gonna help us here locally, but it's gonna help us statewide, if not nationally. So thank you so much. I urge an eye vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. There are no cards on this item. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Next item, item twenty for Mr. Weezer.
And, Madam President, amending motion twenty-A has been circulated, and is before counsel for consideration.
Did you want to go back on that? Thank you, Madam President. Were we okay on that last item, Madam President? Were we okay on the last item? Okay.
Yeah, we had no cards on item fifteen, and I also was told that public comment was also satisfied on item fifteen. That's why we didn't have any cards.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hope everyone's clear, but you're on item twenty.
Item twenty, thank you. Colleagues, we circulated some technical corrections to item twenty. This item makes ten recommendations, which are primarily to do further study and to consider additional funding in future budgets, and also to affirm that the city should use and require the use of the coordinated entry system. Coordinated entry system is a new technology that is being used both by the city and the county to better track our homeless population. This also looks to help the most chronically homeless and to help provide services for those in need. We've been using this new technology sporadically, but now it makes it the official city policy that whenever we work with our homeless population, that we use a coordinated entry system that would help track homeless individuals and provide them the basic services they need. This is one of many other things that the city is now engaging in to better address the issues of our homeless population in the city. So I ask for an eye vote on this one as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Public comment has also been satisfied for item twenty, so we're gonna file your cards. There are no more speakers on this item. Open the roll. I'm... Mr.?
I'm on the queue.
Sorry about that, Mr. Buscaino. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I want to thank Mr. Weezer for your leadership on this issue, on this item. With homelessness getting worse in our city, we just can't throw money freely at the problem without first making sure that every dollar spent on this issue is actually going to rectify the problem efficiently and effectively. Money wasted in one situation is a lost opportunity to fix another situation. That's why this coordinated entry system is so crucial in our efforts to fix our homelessness epidemic across the city. And this program will allow us to match critical needs to critical resources while eliminating duplication. This will free up resources to help more homeless. The coordinated entry system will allow us to tackle the heaviest of our homelessness problem by identifying those most in need through the Vulnerability Index Service prioritization and matching them to resources before it's too late. Rather than a top-down approach to solving this problem, the coordinated entry system, through its engagement and outreach program, will help us gather firsthand information from the streets and more accurately assess the problems and growing needs to more effectively and efficiently match needed services and funding. And it's with great hope that the other cities in this county take note of the efforts that we're putting in place here in the City of Los Angeles. There are eighty-eight cities in the county of Los Angeles. We're calling for a shared responsibility. The issue of homelessness is so complex, and the City of Los Angeles cannot be the only problem solver in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Next speaker, Mr. Bonin, followed by Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Weezer, thank you for bringing forward this item today. We looked at this in committee when we were still in ad hoc committee. Glad that we're a permanent body now. The coordinated entry system, colleagues, is very important. As Mr. Buscaino and Mr. Weezer pointed out, it's sort of a necessary tool to coordinate throughout the county, but it is far from a silver bullet. It is a program and a database, and it's an essential tool that makes us a lot better than the way we were handling things before, but it is not an actual solution. It's just a step to get to that solution. One of the biggest problems we have, and it's outlined in this report, is there's only twenty-two hundred shelter beds or transitional beds in the City of Los Angeles. That means that every night in the county, there are close to twenty-nine thousand people, and in the city, about eighteen thousand people who sleep on the sidewalks. We all see the inevitable result of that in our districts with shanties, encampments, tents growing everywhere. Los Angeles cannot tolerate that anymore. The people who are forced to live on the streets deserve better than that. We're forced into conversations about, do we allow people to live in these little micro shelters on public rights of way? We need to actually come up with a better strategy than that to deal with the nineteen thousand people who are homeless. In the committee, we have begun to ask LASSA and the CAO to work out and cost out for us what it would take to provide more shelters, more shared housing, more bridge housing. We keep getting our butts handed to us in court because we try enforcing laws without providing any alternatives. We need to get over that, and we need to start providing alternatives, storage, shelters, transitional housing. And I hope that the work that we're doing in our committee, co-chaired by Mr. Weezer and Mr. Harris Dawson, will lead us down that path. We have one of the highest rates of unsheltered homelessness in the nation, and that's not just because we have warm weather and it's easier to stay outside. It's because we have consistently failed to offer humane and reasonable alternatives. And the alternatives are not just about whether or not someone is on the sidewalk. If we have... If we normalize sidewalk encampments, as we have effectively done for ten years, we distance people from services. There's just not as many caseworkers who are out there on the sidewalk as there are in a shelter. They're disconnected from the continuum of care that makes them lapse from episodically homeless to chronically homeless, and it makes people who are mentally ill fall deeper into mental illness, and it makes the problem oh that much more intractable. So I'm glad we're working with the CES system. It's just the first step, and I look forward to us working together a lot over the next few months on the other steps. Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I certainly want to echo Mr. Bonin's comments, and I would just add that I think in addition to funding for the various programs that we're talking about, it's going to be imperative for all of us to support permanent supportive housing and shelters in every part of this city. We can't continue to assume that homelessness will stay concentrated in certain parts of the city. Homeless outreach efforts that we've done in my district, for example, have been tremendously effective in trying to get people connected with services and with permanent supportive housing. But one of the big barriers has been an inadequate number of units, an inadequate number of beds, in the beds, in the community, even for the homeless that are already living in our community. So, this assumption that many have, that many out in the public have, that if you build permanent supportive housing or if you build shelters, it will attract homeless to your neighborhood, is completely wrong. The homeless are already living in our neighborhoods, and we need to build the appropriate facilities to allow them to get off the streets, get the services that they need to break the cycle once and for all. So, I'm just so encouraged by the fact that we've set up a committee now, that so many of you have taken such a strong leadership role and taken the bull by the horns and really, once and for all, addressing this issue, and I want to thank you all for that. I just did want to ask one clarification question, Mr. Weezer. On item number two, it might just be a drafting issue, but it does say that it's going to be the position of the council to continue to support and increase funding for Homeless Family Solution System, and then there's a recommendation of the amount. I want to just make sure that that's not a commitment by this council to, in fact, appropriate those funds, which, as far as I know, are not budgeted. So...
No, it's not a commitment. It's not a commitment. It was probably the way it was worded. We just are exploring that and pursuing other budget, every other allocations, and that may be one.
Okay. So, just to clarify, that's a statement of intention. It's the goal of the council to continue to increase funding, but we're not now voting on a particular appropriation or a particular funding increase. With that, I'm happy to support the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. There are no more speakers on the queue. Let's vote on this item as amended. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, let's move on to item twenty-four.
And, Madam President, for item twenty-four, a Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee report has been circulated.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Mr. Clerk, let's move on to item twenty-seven.
Very good, Madam President. For item twenty-seven, amending motion twenty-seven A has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
There are no cards and no speakers on the queue. Let's vote on item twenty-seven as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Mr. Clerk, item forty-three.
That's item forty-three called special for cards.
First card is Mr. Herman on item forty-three. Is he here? Mr. Herman is not here.
Yes, are you the council president today, Nury Martinez?
Mr. Previn, you're on item forty-three, sir.
Right.
Your time is running out.
Okay. So, this is item forty-three, which follows item twenty of the Ad Hoc Homeless Committee. It deals with motion by Englander and Buscaino relative to the funding of some speed bumps out in an area in Mr. Englander's district. It's in connection with Sierra Canyon, Nury Martinez. It's in connection with Sierra Canyon, which is a very nice school, in fact. They have an extraordinarily good football program. I just want to make one comment on that because this school provides tremendous efforts and opportunities for people who would like to play football. They have a winning team, and they have a coach who, I mean, this guy, this body, who are a fifteen-member-strong group, would not want to play against this guy's team because they are, they're big boys, is what I'm trying to say, Councilmember Martinez. But this is an opportunity for Mitchell Englander, who is running for county supervisor, to provide just something that's long overdue, and of course, it's involving public safety, for a very well-off group, a private school group, just like Archer, just like Harvard Westlake. And I think that they should be very appreciative.
He is not speaking about this item.
For the speed bumps, yeah, they are appreciative for the speed bumps, City Attorney. City Attorney, correct? Speed bumps, Sierra Canyon, out in CD twelve, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm upset, sir, because the Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness opened the comment.
He has not talked about this item.
Okay, so that's thirty seconds remaining.
There are no more cards on item forty-three. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item passes. Next item, item forty-seven. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Madam President. Item forty-seven as well was discussed in Budget and Finance Committee, and unless any member wishes to ask a question or discuss the matter in closed session, Budget and Finance recommends, approves of the recommendation of the City Attorney on that matter as well.
Thank you, sir. There are two cards on this item. Mr. Previn. Oh, sorry, Mr. Previn. Public comment has already been taken. It's been satisfied. I'm going to file your card. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Mr. Previn, we've satisfied public comment on this item. Please sit down. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Let's move on to item forty-two.
That's item forty-two called special for cards.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. This concerns Hannah Beth Jackson's Senate Bill three forty-seven, which would add specified gun-related offenses to the misdemeanor convictions that result in a ten-year prohibition on firearm possessions. No objection to this, but we, when it comes to, I think we need zero tolerance on firearms. And as you know, we have here at City Council, one member of the City Council, Joe Buscaino, who carries a loaded gun with him to the City Council just for his own personal protection. He doesn't trust the LAPD. And I'm worried, one of these days, he's just going to open fire on me. He's called me an idiot right from the podium, and I just want you to know, he's got a gun, and he's armed, and he's dangerous. Buscaino.
Next speaker on item forty-two, Herman. I've called him on a previous item. He's not here. Mr. Herman, you're not here. Wayne Spindler on item forty-two.
Yes, guns. You want all the guns. It's because you people were all educated in LAUSD and don't know how to read the English language. The Second Amendment to the Constitution was passed not too long ago. Seventeen eighty-nine, I think, they actually got around to that. Not really sure about that. A well-regulated militia necessary to the security of the state. The right to bear arms shall not be infringed, but you're going to go ahead and infringe it anyway. So, you're going to get sued. Thank God, the NRA's out there. They have the lawyers to kick your asses from here to Sacramento to Washington, D.C., and back. And one day, we're going to all have the right to have a concealed CCR permit so we can carry our weapons freely to protect ourselves from the cops.
There are no more speakers on item forty-two. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item passes. Mr. Clerk, let's move on to item one.
Item one called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, item one, sir. Mr. Walsh's passes. Wayne Spindler, item one.
Racist, racist liens. Good people here. They have driven far from Panorama City. Piece of shit Felipe Fuentes doesn't even pay attention. His constituents are here today to wonder why. They're asking the question, why? Why a five-hundred-dollar lien has two-thousand dollars of interest added to it? Why? I look in the newspaper, isn't the interest rate zero percent for all the rich banker cocksuckers? Isn't that what the Federal Reserve has the interest rate set at? So, why does the city of L.A. have an interest rate of eleven percent a year? Because this city seceded from the fucking United States. I guess I was asleep. I didn't know we're part of Cuba. I didn't know we were part of the fucking Cuba. I didn't know we were not in America anymore. Why? Two-thousand dollars of interest on a fucking five-hundred-dollar lien? That's a fucking eight-hundred percent increase in a lien, for those of you doing math, those of you that can read. I go to Encino last night, for example, where there's liens. Somebody comes in and cuts my fucking hedges down because of Paul Coretts. Now, I got Felipe Fuentes terrorizing people in his constituency with liens of five-hundred dollars, making them twenty-five-hundred dollars. The man that owns the properties on SSI, okay? He's a Thailand citizen of this country, veteran, and you fucking victimize him. So, you got the chance today to understand what the city's about. When you got the police commissioners here, you got to wear a hood because our fucking KKK members, if you don't wear a hood, you're not in the proper decorum. Vote no on all of these liens. Every one of them has usury behind them. Illegal.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Next speaker, Mr. Herman. Are you here? Mr. Herman is not here. Next speaker, Vince Newman. Item one H, is that correct, sir?
Hi, I'm Vince Newman. I own the property at fifteen oh seven Walgrove. I received a lien after I was approved back in, I was approved of a variance back in June third of two thousand and eight, and after that, for seven years, I didn't hear anything. And on July twenty-third of this year, I was going out of town, and I received a call from my tenant that lives at fifteen oh seven, a physician, and said that you received a city notice. So, I picked it up on my way to the airport, and I read it. And when I went to Oregon, I called up, and they said you had a lien. And I said, what is this lien for? And they said, for a denial you received in two thousand and nine. And I said, but I've never received a denial. I had a hearing for a variance that I applied for in June third of two thousand and eight with Ms. Chang, who was the zoning administrator. And after the hearing, she said, call me in two days, which I did. And her assistant told me on the phone that I had been approved, I'd been granted the variance, and that I would get a written correspondence following. For the next few months, I saw other fences being built, and I never received anything. And seven years later, I received this notice. I have two addresses, fifteen oh seven Walgrove and seven three four Appleby, six blocks away. I live in Appleby. My physician tenant lives in that fifteen oh seven Walgrove. I have a letter here stating that we have never received anything verbal or through correspondence from the city, talking about a denial. And back in two thousand and eight, I had four times I had communication with the city, and there was no problem. So, after I returned, I went to the city, and I started doing investigating. I got the copy of the denial, and I started to investigate it. And there were, the primary argument...
Thank you, sir. There's been a request to continue your item for two weeks.
Okay.
So, if you'd like to talk to staff, I'd ask you to, you have a staff member here?
Yeah.
To your right, and he'll talk to you at the ropes. This item, Mr. Clerk, can be continued for two weeks. What's the date?
Yes, Madam President. That brings us to September sixteen.
September sixteen, sir.
And, Madam President, there's been a request from the department to receive and file items one B, G, I, and N inasmuch as those liens have been paid.
Without objection. Thank you. The next speaker is Smont Tonaya.
Hi, I'm his daughter. I'm going to speak for him. He's Thai. But we did receive a notice...
This is one C, correct, ma'am?
One C, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
We did receive a notice of a fee, but we never received the invoice. And then recently, we received something in the mail saying that he owes two thousand and five hundred. Originally, all of what was asked to be done to the home as far as removing the garage, portions that were built that were not legal, we knocked all of that down, and we were aware that there was a notice to pay sent, but we never got the actual invoice. So, it's been a while now, and now we're receiving something saying that he owes two thousand and five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, I believe. But he has whatever it is that he needed to pay from the very beginning, which was, I believe, was three thirty-sixth or three fifty-six in total, but he never received an invoice. And it's been this long. And honestly, with the way he thinks, and I thought maybe he assumed that after demolition of the whole entire property on the, at the house, that he wasn't going to have to pay all of that, but now we're receiving a lien saying that he owes two thousand and five hundred.
All right. Ma'am, I'm going, Mr. Fuentes.
Folks, two weeks to see if we can figure out some sort of arrangement. We'll have staff talk to them.
Okay.
So, there's been a request to continue this item for two weeks. That brings it to September sixteen.
That's correct.
You can just go to the ropes, ma'am, and you'll have staff speak to you. Next speaker, Eric Previn on item one B.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD two, and as you just announced, this one has been paid in full, apparently, or it's been paid in some configuration. If it's been paid in something less than full, please let us know. It is a, this one is a building inspection, or it's an automotive place, and they charge, in this case, a dainty eighteen hundred ninety-two inspection fee. I was very surprised to see, and frankly, a little pleased, there is no two-hundred-and-fifty percent penalty or fine on this one, which sounds great. I mean, this is, I don't like the size of the original penalty. I don't know, perhaps there was some toxic stuff, or maybe there was a good reason, but I don't know why they didn't pay their inspection fee to begin with. But the really important thing is, is that these liens and these penalties and citations and such are not particularly effective, as I think we've seen. I mean, we have, as by your own admission, problems with compliance, and this just causes people great, there's no sense that you can work it out. There is not, people don't know the rules. This is kind of like a hold-your-people-up routine for money. And it's just, it really, we could do a lot better. It's not the lien picks, it's the Olympics, okay?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Daniel Rogelzin. You're speaking on item one E. There's been a request to continue your item for two weeks, but you can go ahead and speak if you'd like.
If I could, I'm here.
Sure, absolutely. Go ahead. I just wanted to let you know that.
Yes, thank you. I'm just calling about the lien notification I was given for my home address, which is fifteen oh one North Kings Road, Los Angeles. And I was very surprised to receive the notice of the lien because I wasn't aware that there was a payment or any kind of violation due from the city. And attached to that lien was a photocopy with an order to comply and a notice of a fee that was from two thousand and ten, and I noticed that the mailing address is not to my home. It was mailed incorrectly. I have written to whoever sent the original notice, explaining the situation and asking for, excuse me, more information about whatever the original complaint was. I don't have any recollection of the complaint, then apparently, according to the notice, it was also fixed, and that there was still a penalty due. But I don't have any supporting paperwork or information about that. All I have is the notification of the actual lien being placed on my property. And whatever the correspondence from four years ago is addressed to the wrong address, I don't have anything else. I asked for some other kind of documentation. I know this is probably not the right venue, but I don't really know how to address this issue at this point.
Sir, we're going to help you. Mr. Charles is going to speak to you here, this gentleman here on the front row. But your item has been continued.
Okay.
For two weeks, which puts you at September sixteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you here to speak on Item 1A?
Yeah, we're calling about the lien notice that we received. She doesn't live in the home. It was her brother. And she didn't receive the notice until a couple of weeks ago. So we're asking if it can be dismissed to the original violation because it's been cleaned up.
Mr. Fuentes.
Madam President, if we can continue the item for two weeks so we can have staff work with them, see what we can do.
Okay.
Your item's been continued for two weeks, which is September 16th.
Okay. So that means we come back here?
No, you're going to speak to the staff. Mr. Charles, raise your hand. You're going to speak to this gentleman, and he will be able to sort things out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote on the remaining items. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Item passes. Item 39.
Item 39 called special for cards.
First speaker, Dr. Leah Garland.
She stepped out.
She stepped out. I need her to be in the room when I call her. Next speaker, Felicia Bander on Item 39. Is she here?
Yes.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Hello, I'm Felicia Bander. I'm a member of SoCal 350 Climate Action. 350 parts per million of carbon in the atmosphere is the level above which we cannot go in order to keep our climate within the range to which human beings are adapted. We are currently at 401 parts per million. It's imperative for human survival that we stop extracting, refining, and transporting fossil fuels. The San Luis Obispo refinery permit, if granted, would throw the doors to California wide open to trains of oil coming from the Canadian tar sands and the Bakken oil fields. These are the dirtiest, most carbon-intensive, most highly-explosive oils on the planet. The trains will come into San Luis Obispo, they'll crisscross the state, they'll travel north to San Francisco and the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta, they'll travel south through Ventura, Oxnard, Malibu, across the 118 freeway and down the L.A. River corridor. One mile and a half-long train per day, 100 cars carrying 30 million gallons of highly-explosive, toxic crude. There have been six explosions this year. First responders are not equipped to handle it. The blast zone is a mile-wide swath along the rail lines. Phillips itself states that the trains themselves will produce significant, unavoidable, toxic, cancer-causing air pollution. Sincere thanks to councilmembers Bonin, Coretts, Weezer for stepping up, standing up to the fossil fuel industry. Renewable energy can power our lives, employ our workforce, boost our economies. It's technologically feasible. We need the political will to accept nothing less.
Thank you very much.
I have some resolutions to submit to the record in support of this petition.
The sergeants will take them from you.
Thank you very much.
You can leave them there, ma'am. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Kwasi Nrumah. I hope I got that correct. Are you here? Good morning, Item 39, sir.
Yes, thank you. I'm Kwasi Nrumah. I'm the co-chair of the Martin Luther King Coalition of Greater Los Angeles. We are definitely opposed to accelerating and allowing these oil trains to come close to our communities and our river, et cetera. In general, we are very strongly committed to conversion, to sustainable conversion for any energy resources. And that means that we have to get away from these fossil fuels, particularly oil. So I won't take up any more of your time. That's our basic position. And we hope that you will protect our communities from potential disasters tied to these oil trains, and particularly, as they may come by the L.A. River, which is also close to the community in which I live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Jack Edet. Followed by Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Jack Ite. I'm an urban planner with Wild Heritage Planners, and I also do work for SoCal 350 Climate Action and Tar Sands Action, Southern California. I really want to thank you all for taking this measure up. I didn't see, noted, the number of neighborhood councils who weighed in on this and did neighborhood impact statements, starting with the Mar Vista Community Council, and then the Echo Park Community Council, Silver Lake Community Council, and the Atwater Village, as well as Encino, all weighed in. There might even be a few more. So the community is ready to see this city protected from these dangerous transportation of dirty and volatile, toxic crude coming from Canada. It could be tar sands. It could be fracked oil that has been exploding. And it will be coming straight through our communities. There's a blast zone that Forest Ethics has done a map that basically includes a mile on each side of the railroad tracks. So we're talking, when you're coming down the L.A. River, it puts at risk the $1.3 billion investment that the city and the state and the federal government is putting in that, as well as all up and down the San Fernando Valley, heading out towards the inland empire and potentially south to the port. So... And these train cars are extremely dangerous. They've been trying to regulate them, but it is totally insufficient. There's been six major explosions just this year, and since 2013, there's been numerous. So L.A. needs to act. Thank you for taking this up, and please oppose the project in San Luis Obispo.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Walsh, followed by Samuel Suketan.
My name is Colleen.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your main was called. You're going to have to wait till the end, okay? Mr. Walsh, go ahead.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Yes, I agree. But this is... With this, but you're very, very much against San Luis Obispo oil trains. But when it comes to refineries in Los Angeles and next to Los Angeles, where the refineries and the oil companies put money in your pockets, you're not against it. Most of the oil trains that are going through Los Angeles aren't coming from San Luis Obispo. They're coming from the local refineries, and not a peep from any of you. Boy, are you really politically correct. How about coming out against oil trains from Alaska? How about coming out against oil trains from Argentina? No. I'm telling you right now, this should be amended and say, "All oil trains stay away from Los Angeles."
Next speaker is Samuel Suketan. Followed by Mark Morris. After you, sir.
Madam President, members of the council, good morning. My name's Sam Suketan, Dirty Fuels organizer for Southern California with the Sierra Club. In the environmental movement, we have a term called a frontliner/fence-line community. As I know, Madam President, with your experience with Buckwheat and Beautiful, you know that communities, low-income communities of color, are most impacted by environmental injustice because of the planning process. If this Phillips 66 expansion goes through the entire dam central coast, from San Francisco down to Orange County, it will be a fence-line community. Even if there are no disasters, even if we don't see an explosion on the scale of Lag Meagantique, these trains are still, again, as my friend Felicia mentioned, spewing carcinogens into the atmosphere. And we know that's the best-case scenario. The valley, our river communities, will join the harbor, will join the places where we already have refineries as places where our families are in danger. That's why, and Councilmember Kokorian, Councilmember Martinez, you may notice, that some of the students from North Hollywood High School who live near these blast zones have been tweeting at you since yesterday. They apologize for not being able to join you today, but they're in fourth period right now. I'm here on their behalf. I'm here on behalf of their 300 classmates at the L.A. Zoo Magnet. I'm here on behalf of the 21,000 Sierra Club members who live in Los Angeles and the 42,000 that live in L.A. and Orange Counties. We're asking for you to join the 40 public agencies and elected officials that have opposed this project, because if it's not good for Los Angeles, it's not good for California. So again, thank you to councilmembers Bonin, Weezer, and Coretts for your leadership. Again, Madam Vice President, thank you very much for your time. Encourage an iVote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mark Morris.
Good morning. My name is Mark Morris. I'm the faith-based director for Granada Hills Neighborhood Council, Granada Hills South Neighborhood Council. But I'm here today as a concerned citizen and resident of North San Fernando Valley. And Mr. Englander, thank you so much for the care that you've given to the residents and those that work in the North San Fernando Valley. And thank you for your being there as a first responder for the tragic train accident in 2008 in Chatsworth. And what we're asking as residents and as working people in the North San Fernando Valley is we do not need any more of these volatile oil-transporting trains coming through North San Fernando Valley. And we congratulate you on this resolution to hold San Luis Obispo to opposing this Phillips 66 expansion, which would increase these trains coming through our community. So thank you, Mr. Englander, and thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
Talking about trains, the city is a train wreck, starting with Chief Charlie Beck.
It has nothing to do with the subject, Mr. Spindler. Item 39.
Cars need to be coming in. Give us the oil. The parents of little kids. They can't afford a gallon of gas, Nuri. It'll cost $9 a gallon for gas because you banned all of the trains from going down the rails with all that crude to the refineries. Woo-hoo! Because you're not going to let the trains go through, Nuri. Gas is going to cost $9 a gallon. Woo-hoo! Because the city's a train wreck. Woo-hoo! You gotta vote no. Let the trains go through, Nuri. It violates the Interstate Commerce Clause. Conoco 76, sue the city of Los Angeles, get an injunction, and bring those fucking trains through. Woo-hoo!
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Spindler. Next speaker, Hamida Sehian.
Thank you, civic council, for having me. I just want to advocate as a citizen of District 2 and a member of Food and Water Watch, who has tens of thousands of members in the L.A. County, that these trains that are coming through not only create carcinogenic problems and potential very hazardous explosive problems which could end up possibly injuring and killing people, but also, if, from an economic point, it's coming through one of the most economically viable parts of Los Angeles. And you're talking about billions of dollars that are being invested. So not only is it something that concerns constituents, but also the businesses within your community. A lot of neighborhood councils from Silver Lake and Echo Park also are trying to improve the quality of the river areas of the city in tandem with these businesses. So I think it's paramount that we really think about the, both the socio and economic impacts of these trains coming through Los Angeles and deny the Phillips 66 from going through with pushing these trains through. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jason Ackerman. Followed by Daryl Gale.
Good morning, council. It's Jason Ackerman, by the way.
Sorry, I couldn't read your handwriting, sir.
This is why we need digital comment cards. Anyway, so I tried to get a motion through my neighborhood council in Encino to support this opposition. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time, and our field deputy didn't bother to tell us that it was coming up for a vote in two weeks, so we put it on the agenda for next month. But, I mean, it's no secret, I love trains. I think we need absolutely more trains, but not oil trains. We need more passenger trains. And these right-of-ways that would be used for these oil trains are currently at the expense of MetroLink service within the L.A. region. And that if we allowed this train to come through the valley, the city, it'd be a royal fiasco on a level that the city hasn't seen in quite some time. So I really encourage you guys to support this opposition motion. Thank you very much. I'll see you later.
Thank you. Next speaker, Daryl Gale. Followed by Leslie Simon.
Good morning, city council. The Forest Service has been reporting that they are spending $10 million per day fighting fires. We are in a severe drought. We need trains carrying volatile oil and combustible toxic chemicals like we need another earthquake or a riot here in Los Angeles. Consider how embarrassing it would be, since six of these trains have already had accidents this year, if we're preparing for our city for the Olympics, the world is watching, and suddenly one of these annoying trains just blows up somewhere in our area. Please, respected council, consider. We do not need this potentially catastrophic vulnerability. Thank you.
Next speaker, Leslie Simon, followed by Jesse Marquez.
Yes, hello. My name's Leslie Simon. I'm a resident of Woodland Hills. All the other speakers have really said what I want to say. I've driven the tracks that go through L.A. City, as I'm sure many of you have, and I've seen the fiery pictures of train accidents, of oil train accidents that are occurring with more frequency throughout the United States. And if you can imagine seeing those fiery disasters happen on the tracks, whether it's at Tampa and Parthenia, or Parthenia, where we had a rally right next to the North Ridge Mall. I mean, we're not talking about some rural area where you'll just have smoke going up, and of course, that's a disaster among itself. We're in the midst of a very, very congested city. And if one of these accidents, we know what train accidents are like in Los Angeles. We've had one recently. Imagine if it was an oil train, and imagine if it happened in one of your districts as crowded as they all are near the tracks. We really need to keep the trains from coming through our communities. Many communities throughout California have come out against this expansion of oil movement by Phillips 66, and we urge L.A. City to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jesse Marquez, followed by Dr. Leah Garland. Hi, Jesse, long time no see.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Jesse Marquez, Coalition for Save Environment Executive Director and a lifetime Wilmington resident. I want to thank all the council members and their staff for pulling an excellent job in doing research on this issue. I live in a community where there are four or refineries within three miles, and then two others within four or five miles. Every one of these refineries has a major explosion, a major fire, a major malfunction and breakdown on a regular basis, as frequently as every two weeks. I lived, my family survived a refinery explosion in the '60s, where we lived in Wilmington and Lomita Boulevard, which was the border. The Fletcher or refinery in Carson blew up. Every member of my family was burned with first, second, and third degrees. Over 200 people were burned in that event, and two employees were killed. All you have to do is look at the safety records of refineries, look at the pipeline records of breakdowns and cracks and spills. All you have to do is look at the railroad industry's safety record. It is terrible. Wilmington, this year, we had a rail derailment going to the Watson Rail Yard, but you don't see that in the news. Well, it's not the first time. They have it every three, four, five years, a rail derailment. And it doesn't happen in the railroad yard, it happens in the community. We've just been fortunate there hasn't been a fire and explosion. But then if you look at all the railroads around us, look what happened in Whittier when they had the big rail derailment there. They are significant. Consider this has to be made. We also look at the fact that California is now leading the nation to transitioning to zero-mission... to zero emissions electric transportation, so we do not need to have extra oil. We are leading the nation right now for introducing new Class 7, Class H container drayage trucks. There are new fleets of electric buses coming online. There's new fleets of electric cars coming online. We even have new trains, such as Maglev trains, that should be considered.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Dr. Leah Garland.
I want to thank Councilmember Bonin and Coretts and Weezer for bringing up this resolution. I want you to please imagine millions of tons of crude oil passing through Ventura and Los Angeles counties and Santa Maria counties, and traversing through the San Fernando Valley and the L.A. River, through South Los Angeles. Just imagining that happen and thinking about the environmental hazards of it passing through daily, and then imagine what happens when there is an explosion. The president of the Railway Supply Institute says the rail industry is betting that they are not going to blow up Los Angeles. But as we all know, oil trains do derail. We've seen it again and again. They spill and they explode with regularity, all while passing along our waterways. It's time to defend and protect our communities and waterways with the same rigor that has been shown in promoting the fossil fuel and transportation industries. I mean, if you don't care about wildlife, then please care about the human beings who will be living along these rails, and think about the long-term environmental impact that would happen with these oil trains. Consider, please, what would happen if there is an earthquake? What if that earthquake were to happen during the time of perhaps the Olympics? All the things that people have said before. This is a warning. This is a time to play a role in history and say no to the oil trains passing through here. You think history will forget these moments, but people won't let these moments be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes cards on this item. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, this is an item asking for the Council to take a position on an item before the San Luis Planning Commission, San Luis Obispo Planning Commission. Some of you may wonder why the hell would we be doing something like that. It's because the action that they're taking could cause more oil bomb trains to come in our neighborhoods, specifically through Wilmington, through downtown L.A., through Elysian Park, through Atwater Village, near Griffith Park, through North Hollywood, through Sun Valley, through Northridge, and through Chatsworth. Over the past six years, oil trains have increased by 400%. And as a result, there have been more and more accidents from derailments, some of them fatal. There was about a dozen people who got killed in Quebec just recently. There have been recent disasters in North Dakota, elsewhere in Ontario, West Virginia, and Philadelphia. If this action is approved, to approve the spur to this rail line from the Phillips 66 refinery in San Luis Obispo, additional of these bomb trains would come through Los Angeles. They're just like any other train by appearance, but they're much more lethal. When they derail, the trains are full of highly flammable liquid, and when they derail, they aren't just coming off their tracks. They're massive destructive, life-threatening bombs, and they're ignited in our neighborhoods. The train downtown in Los Angeles, the impact from it on the geological maps indicates that there could be damage almost as close as City Hall, about as close as the Starbucks nearby. If we take this action, we join with the City of San Luis Obispo, with San Jose, with Davis, with Berkeley, with Oakland, with Moore Park, with Oxnard, Camarillo, Alameda County, and Ventura County, and with 22,000 people across the state who voiced opposition to the project. It is also important to note that this is consistent with our efforts here in Los Angeles to try to move away from fossil fuels. We have such a great record of doing that, of improving energy efficiency in our homes and businesses, the work we've done in the mobility plan to reduce emissions, and we just voted to end our ties to coal-fired power plants, and we're relying more and more on clean energy every day. So, I'd ask that we stand with the rest of the cities that are along the roots of these trains and not further increase the risk in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd like to thank my colleagues, Councilmembers Bonin and Weezer, for their work in bringing this forward. I think there's no question about the danger. We've all seen the flames from oil train wrecks all over the country. There need to be greater protections, and there aren't. So, I think this does endanger the City of Los Angeles. We're doing things to reimagine the L.A. River and reinvigorate the communities around it, and we should be protecting those communities. One of the other items that will be on our agenda later is SB 350, which calls for the very necessary reduction of petroleum use by 50% by 2030 to fight greenhouse gases. This Phillips 66 project will take us in the absolute opposite direction, and I ask you for an I-vote for this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. I certainly want to agree with a lot of what has been said already, and I just want to thank the advocates who brought this to our attention, and that remind us that although this is not directly in our jurisdiction, people will decide this, that the end of the day, we will have to live with the repercussions, should our first responders have to respond to such an emergency. But not only that, it's not only the practical things that may happen and the risk that is facing us with this item, but it is the direction that we want to go as a city and as a society. We had just passed a mobility plan. As Councilmember Bonin mentioned, we are moving away from fossil fuels. We want to get off of coal by the year 2025. So, overall, the direction that we are going as a city is to not depend on oil. So, it sends a strong message in terms of the direction we are going, not only to avoid hazardous situations and risks associated with the direction that this item is going in, but also to, at a policy level, continue on a path that we have been moving in to find alternative forms of energy and alternative forms of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. There are no more members on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item 36.
Madam President, there is a substitute motion for this matter. It has been circulated and is before Council for consideration.
You just got an amendment, correct?
Yeah.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, there's been a substitute motion that's been circulated by Mr. Englander, and I just wanted to propose a friendly amendment to it, so that the last clause should read, rather than "with a total estimated value of this donation," it should read "with a total value of this donation estimated by the donor to be," so that we're clear that this is a donor's estimate and it's not an assessment of value made by the Council as to the value of the donation, which we certainly appreciate very much. And it will be a significant contribution to the Los Angeles Police Department, and it's a wonderful donation that we're pleased to accept. I just don't want the Council to be in a position of putting an actual value on it.
Mr. Englander?
Yeah, I've got to strongly object. No, I'm just kidding. It's actually a very friendly amendment. It makes all the sense in the world. Thanks.
Okay, there are two cards on this item. Mr. Walsh, on item 36, sir?
John Walsh at J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. You see what this is? A total, 10 billboards from Clear Channel Outdoor. For what? When I see these nonprofit billboards, they're for charities. No, this is for the Los Angeles Police Department's racist, racist propaganda. Look, the first time I set foot in Los Angeles and lived here was 1966, and I can tell you that the race relations in this city are the worst they've ever been. And what is Clear Channel going to do? Clear Channel is giving you the use of 10 billboards for two months at $150,000, and the donation of the use of 12 billboards for five weeks at $3,978,630. That's over $4 million. And what is this? This is like 1984 George Orwell billboards. And they're going to be put in the black community. No, not in the black community, because the black community know the police are racist. They'll be put in the Jewish community, west of La Brea, to convince the Jews and the ACLU of how wonderful the LAPD is. I have never seen this, how, I mean, this is like 1984, as I said. This is like George Orwell ads telling you, "Ezell Ford deserved everything he goddamn got." And poor Charlie Beck, I'm telling you, why doesn't he change his name to Charlie Beckman? So that maybe he can get some more Jewish support? Because it's turning into the Jews versus the blacks. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker on item 36, Mr. Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, you have one minute left, sir.
Council President Martinez, it is Eric Previn from CD2. And this is an item that has been identified as some billboard donations to the LAPD. And to do such a thing is appreciated. I was confused by the substitute motion, which I asked the staff to provide. They have not provided it, but it seemed like it was reducing to $150,000, but was it not agendized as 2.9 million? Or was it more, in fact, that this group is going to put up to help the police get the word out? How about if the police put up on some of these billboards, an idea like, "Come to a council meeting, you can speak on any item. You'll be appearing the same size as the council members or other speakers who are brought down to sit at the table, and then everybody will have an even chance to address the council." We'll have a good feeling and a community kind of engagement.
You're not speaking on the item, sir.
Well, that's one idea. It's a proposal for what the billboard might say. It also might say something more like, "City Hall is not fair. That's our policy."
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
And for the record, the substitute motion has been posted on the bulletin board.
For that, thank you.
So, Ms. Nury, we're talking about the ideology of green movement. The green movement that we have disagreed against the pollution of your ideology.
No, sir, that is not the item that you are speaking to.
From DeLion.
You're on the wrong item, sir. This is item 36.
Board of Police Commissioners, Hollywood Highland, John Walsh is 1 million percent correct that the Jews and the police and the African-Americans have a big war going on, and I don't understand why. I really wish there was some law in order to the discernment and the liability that's going to happen if you don't take action, Mr. Eric Garcetti, to stop the nonsense today.
That's not the item, sir. Item 36, for the second time. Item 36?
Los Angeles Police Department, within two months, $150,040 and no change for the administrative officers, the chief legislative analyst, not Mr. Budget Kocorian, the goat.
He is not talking about that.
You're still not on the subject.
You're the chair.
Sir, you're done. Third warning. Thank you, Mr. Herman. You're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Herman. You're not speaking on the issue. You're done. Thank you very much. There are no more speakers on this, no more cards on this item. Mr. Englander?
Yeah, thank you, colleagues, actually. And I want to thank the partnership we have here in putting out these kinds of messages for LAPD as well, and the board companies, outdoor advertising companies, constantly partnering on public safety, as they continue to do. This is a correction that was circulated. It's $150,000, not the 3 or 4 million or whatever was posted on the original agenda. And again, I accepted Mr. Kocorian's, not just friendly, but accurate amendment to reflect that this is an estimate by the industry. So, with that, I ask for your I-vote. Thank you so much.
There are no more members on the queue. Mr. Clerk, there are two votes, one on whether we are going to substitute. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Second vote is on the substitute motion. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Item passes. It's been a request to send this item forth with Mr. Clerk.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 41, called Special for Cards.
Okay, what we're going to do with item 41, item 41 is continued until Friday. We do, and when you continue an item, we generally do not take the public comment on that item. But since we've had so many good people that have adjusted their time to be with us today, we are going to afford you the opportunity to come and speak on this item. However, today, we're going to have to limit that to one minute. So, let's start off with Felicia Bander, Quase. Oh, Jack, and Jack, is it? Jack begins with a last name with an E. But anyway, identify yourself and welcome.
Hello, I'm Felicia Bander, and I'm speaking in support of SB 350. Los Angeles is a climate leader. Eyes of the world look to Los Angeles as an example. This is very important legislation promoting renewable energy. The transition to renewable energy is absolutely inevitable, and the sooner that we fully commit to that transition, the better for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And do we have Jack and Quase, and then there'll be, I think it's an Adam Lane? Yes, sir. Identify yourself and go right ahead.
Yes, my name is Jack Ite, and I work with SoCal 350 Climate Action. We're strong supporters of SB 350, and we think it establishes California as a world leader in renewable energy. I think there's a lot of problems in the legislature right now with what's happening with amendments, but we definitely support the general legislation, but there's a real fight about the details. The cost of electricity from new solar and wind is close to, on a straight-ahead cost basis, to new coal, oil, and gas, but it's still falling. And basically, paid-for solar panels and wind turbines call for free electricity by 2028. So, we save direct energy costs, and we save the planet. Renewable costs are going down, and it deals, okay, well.
Thank you. Quase?
I'm Quase in Crumah. Today, I'm speaking mainly for the Martin of the King Coalition of Greater Los Angeles. I'm also the president of the Neighborhood Council in Echo Park, but we have not taken official position on 350 yet. Martin of the King Coalition is very strongly in support of the bill in the Senate, SB 350. And I have a great respect for Mr. Coretts and trust in him. I have not had a chance to look at some of the amendments, and some of the issues around the solar issue have been raised with me this morning, which I have to check back with our Coordinating Committee. Fundamentally, we support 350 in the Senate. We support particularly, as I indicated earlier, the measures to shift away from our dependence on oil and other fossil fuels in a serious way, and we hope that you will support that as well. And since this is coming back on Friday.
Thank you.
I'm going to consult with Mr. Coretts on the solar issue.
Thank you. Please come in, no, I'm calling for the next speaker. Come identify yourself. And also, I'm looking for Samuel, who's with the Sierra Club, and a Mark Morris. Yes, sir?
My name's Adam Lane. I'm here representing the Los Angeles Business Council. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Mayor's Office and Councilmember Coretts for your continued leadership on clean energy issues and your continued commitment to ensuring Los Angeles and the state of California remain leaders in combating climate change. The IBC strongly supports this motion. The IBC strongly supports this motion, as it aims to ensure that SB 350 both helps mitigate the negative effects of climate change and promotes our local solar programs here in Los Angeles. Allowing all forms of local solar to count without limitation towards the proposed RPS goal is going to help us reach Mayor Garcetti's local solar goal of 1,500 megawatts, which UCLA, USC, and LABC found would create nearly 36,000 job years. I'd also like to note that we've requested an amendment from the Senate Pro Tem's office, requesting a portion of cap and trade funds to provide financial assistance, providing solar assistance in Kyleen-Virus Green areas. This is an amendment we've worked with the State Treasurer's Office, and we have their full support, along with Coalition of Local Labor Unions, environmental groups, solar developers, and building owners. We urge you to support this motion, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm back. Sam Suketan, Sierra Club, CD10 resident. Good to see you again, Councilman. I will be brief. This is a, speaking for the Sierra Club, this is a major portion of our legislative agenda. Many of you served in the Assembly when AB 32 came down or around that time. You recognize how important it is for California to lead on climate. Los Angeles is already leading on reducing transportation for oil with metro improvement. It's already leading on energy efficiency and solar with the DWP. It's critical that not only does LA lead by action, but lead by instruction. Our Assembly members, folks like Miguel Santiago, folks like Autumn Burke, are looking to this, the City Council and other city councils for guidance about what our cities need. You know that. As Assembly members, you know that. As City Council members, you know that. We respectfully urge support for SB 350. Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have Mr. Morris? And I want to, Hameed Hassan and Jason. Jason, my Neighborhood Council friend Ackerman from the Valley. Yes, sir. Identify yourself and go.
Hello, Council. Thank you once again for taking a lead and taking a position on SB 350, which is a tremendous opportunity for the state of California to continue to fight this climate change situation that has impacted all of us and has had, the Pope has had, the Dalai Lama has had, the Islamic Declaration on Climate Change. This is a very important issue that is being addressed by the state of California, and your support is tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I call your name, please come and get in line. So Jason, come on. After Jason, is there Laura from Scope? Yes, sir. Identify.
Hi, I'm Hameed Asyan, CD2, and representing Food and Water Watch. I would like to advocate a yea vote to support SB 350. My background's in physics, mathematics, and I always come back to science with these matters. We've already reached peak oil, and the remaining oil that is in the ground, we need to use to transition to alternative sources of energy, or we won't have that energy source to do so with. Oil also, not only is energy, but it also makes over 4,000 products. So we really need to understand that not only if, everything from, you know, plastics in chairs and cars, all this is made of oil. So it's really imperative that we find alternatives for that and our energy sources. But for the meantime, we need to really, as a leading progressive, as Councilmember Weisler stated, you know, this is LA's identity, and it resonates with what we're going for. Thank you.
Please come forward. Identify yourself.
Jason Ackerman, member of the senior Neighborhood Council, though not speaking in that capacity today. I want to thank Councilman Coretts and the Council for considering taking a position on 350. As stated earlier, it is being put forth by Los Angeles's own Kevin DeLeon, and it is an important piece of legislation. We definitely need to dramatically decrease our dependence on fossil fuels, not just petroleum. Compressed natural gas, which fuels our metro fleet right now, also needs to be ratcheted down into non-usage by our buses. We definitely need lots of solar panels. We definitely need lots of wind turbines. We need, we need to lead this revolution here in Los Angeles. We've been doing it, and I really encourage you to support this legislation and to continue the fight in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and identify yourself. Follow, you'll be followed by Manisha Vays, Manisha Vaz?
Oh, she's not here, actually.
Oh, she's gone. And what about Leslie Simon? So please, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Laura Muraida, and I'm here with Scope, and we're a community-based organization that's been working for the past 10 years on ensuring that the green economy is inclusive and accessible to low-income communities of color. And we are here in support of SB 350 and a local resolution that'll help spur job growth and transition us off polluting energy sources that disproportionately impact low-income communities of color. We recently did voter outreach in greater South LA and talked to over 2,800 voters, and the preliminary results show that South LA largely supports SB 350. But the feedback was that they did wonder how legislation such as this will impact their daily lives, what implications it will have. So we believe that rooftop solar is an important part of this goal, but also it's imperative that the city and local utilities implement programs and strategies that ensure that, that are affordable to low-income communities and improve access to renters and create good-paying jobs.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Yes, hi. My name's Leslie Simon. I'm a resident of Woodland Hills. I've been involved in progressive politics and in labor for my entire career, and usually I'm here talking about workers' rights. I've, you know, as I've learned more and more about climate change, you know, we often in the labor movement talk about a campaign or an election being the most important one in our lifetimes. And this really is the most important one in our lifetimes. If we get it wrong and we don't move from a just transition from oil to renewable energy, we will not have a planet that we want to live on. Yes, the planet will survive. Our lifestyle, our ability to live in this world will not survive. LA should be a leader in this. We should move towards a just transition with good jobs from oil to renewables. 350 is the starting point for that. Thank you.
Now, thank you. Jesse Marquez, Brian Barajas, and Mr. Herman. No applause, Mr. Spindler.
Jesse Marquez, Executive Director and Founder, Coalition for Save Environment headquartered in Wilmington. We're an environmental justice organization. And again, I want to thank and applaud all of our council members and their staff, because this is the desire of the public, that we transition into a clean world, a clean environment, and clean technologies. In 2001, we first proposed that the Port of Los Angeles adopt and have solar energy. It took 10 years for them to finally adopt a policy, and now they've built 2, 3 megawatts. They still got 7 megawatts to go, but that's our goal, to accomplish that. In our public comments for different project proposals, expansions at the Port of LA, we asked that they include solar energy. So now, every project that comes forward, either a new or expanding one, they have buildings that are installing solar energy. And we've always supported funding, so therefore, we support cap and trade funds being used for this. The new Proposition 1 funds, there's 200 million allocated for Los Angeles, another resource.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barajas, followed by Mr. Herman.
Well, I am not one of those idiots who have been coming up here and believing in the satanic form of science, that mankind is causing global warming. As a matter of fact, these idiots who come up here, well, maybe I should be a little bit more blessings upon them, because their ignorance of the fact that it is not man-made climate change, it is actually how the course of events in history has shaped the planet Earth into going from ice ages to warming to ice ages and back again to warming. It's millions of years of cycle. That's science. Now, how do we deal with the fact that we, as mankind, must progress? We employ nuclear fusion energy. That increases the amount of energy and more people.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
To the ideology of this green movement, that we move into the future by fusion energy. Fusion energy. Not the idea of solar windmills or solar panels, but we concentrate on the idea, the principal idea to meet our goal in life, which is fusion energy. Fusion energy. Fusion energy. So that mankind's solution to life after I'm fucking dead is that I don't care. I care less. Because there's only one power that brings you down on your knees, Mr. Herman. On your knees, Mr. Herman, and that is.
Stay on the subject.
Fusion energy, Mr. Herman. Take it back.
I'm glad that you're here. Good people to see the challenges of our jobs, so. Anyway, with that said, we will continue this item to Friday, and it will close the public comment. If we need to, we'll reopen it. That brings us where? And again, thank each and every one of you for taking the time out to come down and give us your opinion. We do listen, and we appreciate it.
And, Mr. President, Friday is September 4.
Okay, September 4. Okay. Next.
That brings Council to general public comment for items not on Council's agenda.
Okay, let's start off with Mr. Murphy. Sean, Murphy, Jason from the Valley, Jason Ackerman, if you're still here. Daniel, Daniel, Daniel Gus? Come on, Daniel, you can go first.
Hey, I put in a card for item 40. It was never called, so just FYI. I don't know if it was called at all.
I'll check that.
Yeah. So, you know, regarding that, the thing that item 40 was, I'll expand on it. It's a good idea to promote shelter pets, but it's treating the symptom and not the cause. For example, in Nury Martinez's district, there's a pit bull and chihuahua breeding operation, which is permitted by the city. So if you didn't permit pit bulls and chihuahuas from being bred, maybe you wouldn't have to promote shelter animals. Last year, Mr. Englander invited in a championship beagle rescuer, and you allowed him to promote his business at City Council. If you didn't do that, you'd have fewer animals ending up in your shelter. Mr. Englander also purchased his three golden retrievers and promotes them on his campaign for, so anyway, was that for 40 or was that for general?
I'll find that out on that, Daniel, and I'll talk to you. I probably need to chat with you anyway. I'll have Justin call. Okay, Jason, is Sean not here?
All right, so it's a general public comment, right?
Go ahead. Identify yourself. You'll be followed by Oscar Mohammed. Please come to the center aisle.
All right, so, hello again. Jason Ackerman, and senior Neighborhood Council. So I'm the Area 2 rep, and part of my territory that I represent is mostly the Sepulveda Basin. And I understand that this body voted on the plan for the Olympics yesterday, and I'm sad I couldn't be there. I had to work, and there's no video conferencing event, as I could have commented from anymore. But I'm very concerned about the canoe slalom event that's going to be held in Sepulveda Basin. We don't have the facilities for that that I know of, unless you're going to put people in the river. I would really hate to see the Sepulveda Basin carved up for a canoe track. Also, you're talking about putting equestrian there. We don't currently have equestrian facilities. I really don't think we need equestrian facilities. There's a lot of equestrian facilities at Pierce College. It would be a much better home for that event. I support the Olympic effort in general, and I really look forward to seeing the boom in transit service that we're going to get with Measure R2 and for this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mohammed? Mr. Walsh? Maria Rozell? Yes, sir.
My name is Oscar Mohammed. I speak for the oppressed, speak for the struggling poor, and I speak for culture change. We look at this homeless situation in America today. It's mostly larger cities in the north half that are probably with the homeless, where you find more blacks there. More blacks are unemployed, more blacks come from senior homes, more blacks come from very bad circumstances that create the homeless situation to Los Angeles. And majority of the blacks downtown Skid Row, they are not from Los Angeles. They have been sent here by the politicians. They started this situation with money and economically, to money to help the homeless. But we have a moral, the problem is morally, it's not economically. We should find a way to structure our life better in America, structure our homeless situation better. But down south, at the homeless situation in Alabama, the homeless people have to go to the church twice a day and then live in the church area. They do not have the right to be immoral all day long and all night long like they do in Los Angeles. And when the homeless go to the church.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mohammed, and Mr. Walsh. And like I said, Ms. Rozell, Maria Rozell, and is it Adele Wilcox? Please come forward.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Soon, there will be a petition circulating. Sign it. And on the ballot will be a referendum that protects every single taxpayer in the city of Los Angeles from paying for cost overruns. But the most important thing I came to say, and I listened to it, I'll repeat it. Anybody but Mitch Englander for supervisor. 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 Men, anybody but Mitch Englander for supervisor. Anybody but Mitch Englander for supervisor. Anybody but Mitch Englander for supervisor.
Thank you, Ms. Rozell. Followed by Dale Wilcox, followed by Brian Barajas. Yes, welcome.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk. My name is Marcia Rozell. Sorry, my handwriting's bad. I was actually here to discuss item 15, but no comments were heard on that, so I will keep this general. I guess it has to be super general. So, super general, I just feel that the City Council has an obligation to write carefully considered comprehensive ordinances in general, not relating to the proposed B ordinance, that really take public safety into primary concern. And I think that a lot of times, ordinances in general are rushed through for some sort of reason, and they're not considered carefully enough, especially with regard to safety. Sometimes ordinances also involve many, many people in Los Angeles, like anybody who would work outside, any police officer, any mail carrier, any child who plays on the playground, anybody who's at a public park. They might like to be kept safe from something that they could be threatened by that's five feet away from them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So if I could have Dale Wilcox, Brian Barajas, Quase, I don't see him. Is there a Leo Renee? Please come forward.
Now, on the LaRush PAC website, we have an article, "Make Way for the Peace Paradigm: Get Rid of Obama." Now, this details the threat of thermonuclear World War III with the NATO's expansion towards Russia's borders. Now, there's another indication of why this is happening, and that's a lack of science insight in most of our population. So I refer to another title called "Global Warming Scare Is Population Reduction, Not Science." I think the intention here would be, why is it that a lot of people succumb to policies which they do not know of? Why do they go along to get along? Well, it's Well, it's very simple. Well, because they're not moral, competent people.
Okay, thanks. Please come forward. Identify yourself.
Good morning. Dale Wilcox, speaker for Be Safe Alliance. This week, I've removed six honeybees and it's only Wednesday. Two from families who require EpiPens, one from Council District 11, who the mailman won't deliver the beehives to. This is her second hive in three months, and one from the Montebello Fire Department. Not allowing public comment on an issue that affects public health and safety is of great question regarding the actions of devoted representatives. I have not heard back from my council members, who I gave a handwritten request for a meeting. Mr. Harrison Dawson, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Busciano, Mr. Bloomfield, I have not heard back from you. Please pay attention to your district, which includes the people, the representatives and anyone who York County counted to.
Thank you, sir. Quase, I thought you had left us. Come on up, followed by Ms. Renee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Westen. One, it's unfortunate that folks who came down today to speak on the homeless question didn't get a chance to make comments. Yes, I know that the Subcommittee held hearings, et cetera. Still, we have a crisis. Over a million people have been homeless in our city since the year 2009 and that puts us in a very serious crisis zone on that issue. I spoke before the Board of Supervisors yesterday because the Martin Luther King Coalition believes that the $2 billion that the county has available, that they were debating spending on a new jail facility, needs to go to housing, needs to go to mental health services and particularly housing for the homeless. Another point is that several of our neighborhood councils, I'm the president of Neighborhood Council in Echo Park, we submitted community environment impact statements on several issues and I don't see them listed. This is an issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Renee, come forward, followed by Eric Previn and then Henry Marine.
Hi, dear Councilmen. Some of you know me. Mr. Rue, you don't know me yet. My name is Leah Renee. I've been coming here for three years and I'm stuck in the City Hall and it's very interesting. You have a motion that Bonin and, by the way, Bonin always disappears when I get up to speak. I'm in City 11. Thank you for coming out, Mr. Bonin. I would like to make sure you know that the pattern and practice that is happening over on Paseo Miramar that you passed the motion is happening through the bluffs and you have your laundering illegal building approvals through the Coastal Commission and I cite ZA 2023158. It's all on your desks right now. It was never approved by the city and you're using the Coastal Commission staff to approve the illegal building permits so that you can pass projects that don't comply with the city and local laws. It's very dangerous. The city paid out $16 million, as evidenced on your board this morning. Please comply with the law and provide me an appointment with the city attorney and the mayor because unfortunately, Mr. Bonin doesn't want to speak with me. So where do I go?
Thank you. So Mr. Previn, followed by Henry Marine. Your time is up. It's time for Mr. Previn. It's, it's time for Mr. Previn. You're disrupting the meeting. Please stop, Mr. Spindler. This is Mr. Previn's time. Go ahead, sir.
Council President Westen, I appreciate your scrupulously defending my opportunity to speak before this body. Of course, that makes my nose twitch a little bit because it seems that the current system is designed almost to prevent individuals from speaking on items on the agenda. This is general public comment, so no disruptions, please. I have asked you nicely, I've tried. I think the proposal is the best place to go, which is six months. You try it. You say, if it's on our agenda, if this hallowed body's going to vote on it, we will hear two minutes from the constituents. That's it. Now, you may say, well, look, Mr. Previn, we've got 10,000 people when you put a homelessness thing on the item. We may, but we may not. We may have a dozen people like Mr., like the various articulate speakers who you brought down today for the heroic train issue. Look, you can do it, but you cannot squelch dissent. You cannot make it a game of hide the ball. It just doesn't work. So I would ask you, sir, because you're a, you're a well-respected man, you're a, you're a very smart man. I think we've all seen that you are, there is not one challenge that this city cannot beat, including...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Marine, followed by Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Herman.
Yes, ongoing MOUs, show high city hackla and union officials agreed to disrupt the lives of people in the city of Los Angeles, take money from the people of the city of Los Angeles on an ongoing basis and had no intention of making payments to laces or calipers in the past or in the present tense. So now we know that the people sitting before us are a bunch of niggly ass people. We had no intention illegally serve we the people yesterday, today or tomorrow. Why, what's wrong with y'all? It's that easy to get votes with contributions to unions, keep you, keep you in office? You've been giving it to them for 25 fucking years and nah, that's how you stay in office. You don't have to do nothing, keep your mouth shut.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marine. Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Herman. No applause, Mr. Herman. Mr. Spindler, you want to talk? Yes. We can't sing the Star Spangled Banner? No! But there's one thing we can do. No on Mitchell Englander for the Supervisor Board. No on Mitchell Englander for Supervisor District 5. Vote no on Mitchell Englander for the Supervisor 5. Vote no. No on Englander. No, no. No on Englander because the city of LA is a train wreck. Woo, woo! Vote no on Mitchell Englander. Vote no on Mitchell Englander because Mitchell Englander is a rhino foe. Vote no on Mitchell Englander because he's part of the City Hall train wreck. Woo, woo! Vote no on Mitchell Englander. Mr. Herman?
Woo, woo! Mitch Englander, vote no. But two hours, eight minutes into yesterday's program, I was called out on being disruptive of the meeting and disrupting of our lives. Every meeting I want to record to reflect that, you little bitch. Sit down and have a talk with me. Mere speech does not constitute actual disruption simply because the US Ninth Circuit ruling in 2010, government officials must tolerate offensive, irritating fucking speech.
Could you keep your voice down? I don't want to let you break our equipment.
Offensive fucking speech. It does not mean constructive speech. It means do not use disruption to suit your needs, Englander. Vote no. Vote no. Vote no for Mitch Englander. Vote no. Vote no for County Supervisor. That's a song you jackass, don't you hear it? So do not respond by the mistrust of not disdaining our...
Thank you. Your time is up. Your time is up. Mr. Rue, we may need to give the power to your committee to dispense medication. Okay, is there any more business before this body?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Consider those posted and referred announcements, members? Any announcements? Then can we all please rise for adjourning motions? Everyone, please rise. I'm looking to my right side, Mr. Coretz, Weisar. Mr. Coretz?
I just briefly want to adjourn in memory of Wes Craven, one of the most notable individuals in the genre of horror filmmaking. He was an actor, producer, director, screenwriter, best known for The Nightmare on Elm Street and creating Freddy Krueger and other memorable characters, also the Scream series and a number of others that are not known quite as well. So there are few people who have made as, as much of an impact on that particular genre, so I'd like to adjourn in his memory.
I'm still looking on my right side. Now I'm looking to Mr. Harris Dawson's side, the left side. Any adjourning motions? I do not see any members. This meeting is adjourned. We'll see you on Friday.